All right, let's go ahead and get started.
Mr. President, just to go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to bring this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of Southfield City Council conducted March twenty-third, six P.M. via teleconference. Madam Clerk, may you please call to roll?
Banks?
Present.
Brightwell?
Here.
Haskins?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Present.
Morris?
Present.
Taylor?
Here.
Cruz?
Present.
Mr. President, we do have a quorum and pursuant to Executive Order twenty twenty dash fifteen from Governor Whitmer, we can proceed during a teleconference city council meeting.
All right, very good, thank you, Madam Clerk. Can we all please say the pledge of allegiance as normal? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. At any point, if anyone's having a problem hearing me, please feel free to let me know. Again, this is our first run at this, so hopefully things will run as smooth as possible. This evening, we do not have any presentations. We also do not have any appointments. We have one set of meeting minutes that need to be approved.
This is Councilman Mandelbaum.
Sorry, and before you speak, can you please say your name, so we know who's speaking?
Mr. President, this is City Clerk Hawkins. Before we approve the minutes and the consent agenda, we would just need a motion for a Rule Ten for these items, because this is the committee of the whole meeting.
Okay.
This is Councilman Mandelbaum. I'd like to make a motion that we have a Rule Ten.
Councilwoman Taylor, your support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum and supported by Councilwoman Taylor that we have an immediate need to act to pass a Rule Ten for this evening's consent agenda and minutes approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Mr. President, this is the clerk. We need to do a roll call vote since we're doing a teleconference.
Okay.
Excuse me, this is Councilwoman Taylor. If I wanted to pull an item from the consent agenda for discussion, is this the time to do so? Right now, we're on a motion for the Rule Ten that I just need to do a roll call. It would be after that. Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Okay, that was for the Rule Ten approval.
All right.
Councilman Mandelbaum would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of March second, twenty twenty, Committee of the Whole.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Councilwoman Brightwell approves, support.
Okay, now it's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, that we approve the meeting minutes of March second, twenty twenty, Committee of the Whole meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Hearing none, minutes are approved. Moving to the consent agenda.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman...
Taylor.
Taylor?
Yes.
You have some items you would like to remove or for discussion?
Just one, yes, sir. Just one, Item J, appointment of Assistant City Attorney Two and Deputy City Attorney.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, Councilman Brightwell.
I just want to pull an item perhaps for clarification. It could just be a clerical amendment, but Item Number Eight.
Item A?
Yes, and we might... Yeah, before, it's more of a clerical item, but I just want to make sure that if we approve something, what is approved is the final document.
Okay. Are there any other consent agenda items to be pulled for discussion before we vote on the others? Okay, then I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Items A.
I'm sorry, this is Councilman Mandelbaum. I was on mute. I would like E pulled for discussion.
E, okay. Any other items?
This is Councilwoman Morris. I can make the motion, I just want to be clear. So, we're pulling for discussions A, E, and J?
And J, correct.
Okay, okay. Well, then, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items B, C, D, F, G, H, I, K, L, M, N.
Okay.
Support, Councilman Brightwell, I support that motion.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilwoman Morris and supported by Councilman Brightwell that we approve consent agenda items B, C, D, F, G, H, I, K, L, and M, and N. Are there any questions on those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Oh, we need a roll call, I'm sorry.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Going back to Item A, Mr. Brightwell?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the copy that I'll have here, and it's got a consumer's release copy, it has draft on it. When I could go to consent agenda Item A, it has draft at the upper left corner, and I don't want to be approving a draft.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes, Madam Clerk?
That's just a clerical area, it shouldn't have said draft on there, that's all.
Okay, so, Mr. Brightwell, you'd be okay with approving it, provided the terminology draft is not on that document, that it is the final draft?
Yeah, well, we removed that, I hate for this to be in a record, ten years when they would approve the draft, so I have an assurance that this will be approved, I mean, will be removed, and this will be the final document. That's the only thing I want to say.
Yes, we'll make that notation with the motion.
Okay, yep, I'm okay.
Amendment to the motion. Okay, Mr. Mandelbaum, Item E?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
I'm... Mandelbaum is here. The question I have is, what is the exact property location? The exhibit was not very clear, and I was just wondering, the land or the parcel that's for sale, if someone can clarify? I'm looking at sketch of proposed Unit One. That's the only thing that I have, is that little dark box that says Proposed Unit One, the actual area that we're talking about?
Mr. Chairman, that is correct. It is Unit One, and it's labeled Proposed Unit One in the highlighted area of the sketch, and that piece of property is, I'm looking, is a five-acre piece of property, and that's what has been described.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'm set.
Okay, anybody, anyone else counsel on Item E? Okay, then moving on, Councilwoman Taylor, Item J?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to know if there... Well, I'll go and explain my concern about this. We, the council, have been asking for our definition of positions and having employees' pay scales and all that looked at and reviewed for the past two or three years. We understand that there's an RFP out, the last meeting in January, or February, it was January or February, I can't remember which one, it was sent out as a request for quote. I'd like to know the status of that, and here's my concern. At that time, we had over twenty-five PDQs with HR, and I don't know the status of any of those, and all of those were from people that are currently employed and have been for more, or, you know, ten years or more, and they're looking for answers to their questions, and they've taken the time to complete a PDQ, the employee as well as the managers, and they're still being told to wait. But we continue to receive and approve all these one-offs, and that is kind of disheartening to the employees that are sit there and holding through, waiting on us to make a decision. So, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what's going on.
Okay, Mrs. Zorn, or Mr. Meadows, I don't know if he is there, did you want to speak to that?
Mr. President, I will speak to that. I'm not sure if Mr. Meadows is with us, but I would also welcome his comments as well. The RFP is currently bent, the city has received it. It is being scored and evaluated by a group of managers as to which consultant we'll be working with. As to the PDQs, Ms. Taylor is correct, there is a large group, and we continue to, we're waiting for this wage analysis to come in, but let me remind you, the PDQ is, you know, the wage analyst will look at market competition. As we've discussed in the past, you know, the city in the late eighties used this hay system for rating various positions. All positions, for the most part, kept pace with inflation as raises were given across the board to various bargaining groups, with the exception of the period during the Great Recession. And I like to point out, period that the city did not ask for any cutbacks or recessions in wages like a lot of the other peers, and I'll use Royal Oak had a ten percent reduction across the board. We didn't do that. We didn't give out raises, and this council is, I don't have the exact years in front of me, but since twenty sixteen, we've been doing pretty much increases on an annual basis. The PDQs, there was a period at one point where twenty-some were evaluated, I need to have the last time that happened, but Mr. Meadows does have some PDQs, I don't know the exact number, but I'm not necessarily sure, the wage study's going to tell us where we're at in the competitive stance. I also wanted noted, every time we went through the collective bargaining process, we were looking at what our peers were doing, Farmington Hills, Troy, Dearborn Heights, we were constantly comping our wages. We've not found where we're out of line or out of sync, and we're certainly ahead of our peers in the fringe benefit arena. You know, I think we need additional time, and I'll also point out that we've had a new HR director, we've cleaned up tremendous amount of policies the last couple of years, during the last year that Mr. Meadows has been with us. I'll offer those comments, and I don't know if James is with us or not.
Well, I appreciate that, Fred, I'm City Administrator Zorn, however, we're looking at job titles, and not just salaries, but salaries included, but we are also looking at job titles, and if we can look at a job title to reclass or to add on a new person, that means we're looking at something. We also have all those additional PDQs where we were telling employees, "We will get to you," but then when we do these one-offs, that's like telling them, "Not now. We'll get to you when we get around to getting to you." It's kind of like, I don't know how, it's kind of like slapping them in the face. You put them, and it's kind of like, they were put into a position where they had to go through the arduous work to complete that PDQ, not only them, their managers did it as well, and they've been told the same thing over and over and over. And now, we, the council, are getting told the same thing over and over and over, and until situations like this come up and we get a chance to discuss them, nothing is, well, we're not told anything. And yet, we have excellent, wonderful employees, as we all know, our employees are great, but we need to treat them the same way in all areas, and this is just one place that I see that we're failing, in my opinion. And the other part that I'm questioning is, Marceline, I think, is already in this Deputy City or acting in this position. Should she have been a part of the group that we approved last time? Because she, to my understanding, is doing the work.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to defer that question to the City Attorney. These are management positions within her department, and additionally, let me point out that neither of these are new positions. When Ms. King became the City Attorney, that did create a void, and I know City Attorney King has been, had went through a selection process. I'm not intimately familiar with that process, perhaps she can speak to that.
Yes, good evening, this is Dawn King, the City Attorney. So, the two positions, that's correct, they are internal positions, so initially, when I first started, we had six attorneys. Over the last six years, we were down to four, and what happened when Ms. Ray moved on and I took the City Attorney position, I was covering several areas, including the courtroom, and that is why we had the void in the courtroom, which included Mr. Ryan coming in to cover that, but that still left a void in other areas that I had covered. Ms. Pruitt has been here for several years, she was not a deputy, she was doing things in the Labor Department, assistant, as far as labor relations issues. Since I've been City Attorney, she stepped up and taken on some other areas, because again, once I left the courtroom, then there were, that left several areas from Freedom of Information Act. We researched and drafted and reviewed the ordinances, there's different policies from different departments, legal documents, different agreements and contracts from within and without. We still work at the court with different things that have to go in front of the judges. So, when Marceline stepped up, she did take on additional duties in addition to what she had been doing, and Mr. Rivers, he was covering the courtroom, but then we needed him even more so, because I could no longer go upstairs, and Ms. Pruitt, with labor being one of her specialties, there's a lot of times that there's hearings and grievance procedures, so that pulls her out. So, then we were left with one person trying to cover three courtrooms, so these positions really were just to cover us from what we've been working short on for several years, because like I said in the past, there were, at one point, five or six attorneys, and now we're down to four, if, you know, if these appointments were approved, and that would just put us at four. And everybody has to chip in for everything, so Mr. Rivers wouldn't only be in the courtroom, he's going to be reviewing contracts, he's going to be working with other departments. Ms. Pruitt's going to continue to get in even more so with the labor, contract negotiations are coming up, so that's going to take her away even more. Ms. Fitch is in the courtroom, but she also works with the Building Department and Code Enforcement and other areas, so we are just stretching everybody, and that is why this was an item, but it was internal, these are individuals that had already been here and working in the court, and we're just trying to hold on to the best we can to be able to provide the services to the city.
Nancy Banks, I have a question.
All right, Ms. Banks?
Thank you. First of all, I agree with Councilwoman Taylor. I know this isn't the greatest of timing, but I personally would like to bring this back to a study session. I have not met these individuals, I have not seen a resume, and I just think that we need to postpone this to later dates, and then wait for some of the answers that Councilwoman Taylor had indicated. And again, I'd like to see a resume on these two individuals.
Okay, we can work on that, but I just want to make sure everyone understood, this is not someone we just said, "Hey, let's create these appointments." These are people that have been in the office, and they're going to be needed once we get through this crisis, so that won't be any problem, I'll make sure I get the resumes.
And also, I'm not saying that people are not qualified, that's not my issue at all. My question is, I didn't have a chance to talk about it prior to going on the consent agenda, which I would have liked to, because I could have had these answers, but my other questions are, for the Assistant City Attorney position two, is that a management position? And if so, how many direct reports will they have?
It is a management position, and then you said, "How many reports?"
Yeah, direct reports will they have?
When you say direct reports, what are you referring to?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, how many people will be reporting to that person?
They, no one will be reporting to them except our legal support staff, our administrative assistant, and the secretary.
And, Mr. President, it's my understanding that all of the attorneys in the City Attorney's Office have always been management appointments. They're employees of the City Attorney, but they've always been presented to council for approval.
Okay.
Nancy Banks, in the future, any appointments that are going to come before council, I personally would like to see them brought before at a committee of the whole meeting. This way, if there's any questions that council has, we can address it at that time to them and/or their manager. I know it used to be done that way years ago, and I just think it would be important, and I know it would help me in making the decision. Thank you.
And if I may, Mr. President, we have presented, the majority, until this situation we're dealing with, with this pandemic, we have presented and provided an opportunity for council to come in and meet the candidates. I believe, you know, most of you know Marceline, she has been with us for a number of years, as in a...
Yes.
Dawn, help me out, an Attorney Two or Three?
It's an Attorney Two.
Two. So, this will move her up to the deputy?
I'm sorry, Marceline may have been Attorney Four.
All right. I apologize for not having that. And then, Ryan has been doing prosecutions for you as a contractor for...
Well, he was non-career, part-time, covering for the last four, five months.
And since this is going to be brought back for review if we vote to do so, I have one other question that I would like to ask, and it would be of Mr. Meadows, unless Fred you can answer. Is the three percent increase after six-month review, would, or shouldn't these fall into what we just approved that they haven't, they could have the six-month review, but the increase would be after a year with a positive review? And that way, they would fall in line with everybody else? Because if we do it after six months and then a year goes, are we going to do it again?
Um, I would like to have that policy in front of me. We typically, on our management employees, do a six-month step, and then, you're correct with the years, I'm going to quickly attempt to reach Mr. Meadows.
Or if we want to put a motion or a vote before council to move this to the next meeting, or Committee of the Whole, or whatever, so we can get resumes and that kind of thing. I personally know Marceline, I don't have a problem with it, I do have a problem with others that are sitting there, other PDQs that are sitting there, and nothing has happened with those over the last few months. So, I guess that's a request from James, that I would like to have answered.
Okay.
So...
This is Lloyd, I just, I have a question from Ms. Banks in terms, and maybe Ms. Taylor too, is, you're saying, moving forward, do you want to see resumes of, how far, or where within organizational chart do you want council to start reviewing resumes before we vote on them?
No, just, I'm sorry, Nancy Banks, just when we're appointing some of the management positions, I would like to have an opportunity to meet some of the people, and then, there may be questions that we want to ask them personally in a study session, not for every single person.
No, I didn't say you said that, I'm just, I was trying to gauge exactly, you know, get an idea of at what point would that trigger, you know, is there a certain management level or something like that, that we could, we would instruct Mr. Meadows or whomever to bring that to us first before we took a vote on it or whatnot. I hear what you're saying.
Personally, anything that's on our agenda that we are approving, I would like to, again, review at a committee of the whole meeting, and then have a resume behind us, you know, and I thought that's what we were doing, I'm not sure, when we stopped presenting the resumes for, you know, those positions that council has to appoint and approve. I'm sorry, maybe I'm using the wrong words.
And I feel I need to just point out that we have been arranging an opportunity for council members in groups to meet recent appointments as well as the resume. I think what we're really looking at is the uniqueness of the situation that we're working under, the constraints, and, you know, the resume should have been placed in here, that was an oversight, but Ms. Banks is correct, we have historically have provided council an opportunity to come in and meet, and then prior to the meeting, sometimes under presentations or at a cow, we've provided an opportunity for the council to ask questions to the candidate in public, and many of you have sat in, you know, from Meadows to Michaels, to, you know, the police chiefs, you know, an opportunity for one-on-one with council members prior to the appointment process.
And yes, you are correct, you are correct, City Administrator, and I do want to acknowledge that, you have done that in the past, and I really appreciate it. And that, again, is not my, it's not a complaint, it's not my issue at this point. Mine was more with what I was saying before, and the other employees that we have, pattern, and have been for months and years, that's a whole pattern that I think... That's a, a whole pattern that I think we, we're gonna have to find a way to break.
If I may, through the chair, this is Dawn. So before all of this, just so I have an understanding, um, we had, uh, at least with attorney two, you know, we've gone through the process and the interviewing. And he was, well, Marceline's reclassification, she was scheduled at the regular meeting for, um, oh, under the appointment section, because we had went through the process. So now you're saying we're gonna take it back to a study session and then have them come back for a regular meeting also?
Well, I think the agenda for, for tonight, we can vote our conscience this evening. If it passes, then, well, you know, it passes. Um, and then with the understanding or the, you know, with the voices of some concern, uh, moving forward, making sure that we're doing things a, a certain way, um, for other hires moving forward. Uh, because everybody may not feel the same way, uh, like first and two people.
That's true.
Um, so, um, we're gonna, we're gonna do a roll call vote. If it passes, we'll move forward on this one. Uh, like I said, with the working knowledge, uh, moving forward of how we want to try to conduct these or want to talk about this further later on the next round of hires. Uh, I think both points are well taken. Um, but at the same time, like I said, uh, we'll see what the rest of the council decides.
Nancy Banks, so how are, how do, do we make a motion to postpone? If that's what we're interested in doing?
Well, uh, this is, uh, QuikHawk. And we, we would have to decide after we get done the session with the item J, because we still, uh, have approval or we have to act on consent agenda items A and E. And then, uh, the item J could be voted on separately.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anything else from anyone?
Yes.
No, I was just gonna go ahead and, uh, make a motion that we approve A and E and get that out of the way. And then we can just sit down and discuss J.
Okay.
Well, I make a motion that we approve item A and J.
No, A and, A and E.
A and E.
A and E, yeah, A and E, all right.
Okay, Councilwoman Morris, support.
Okay, then moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Morris, that we approve consent agenda items A with the term draft taken off of that document as suggested by Mr. Brightwell, as well as item E. Are there any other questions or concerns? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please, uh, take a roll call?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Haskin?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Okay. So then that just leaves us with item J. Now you were saying, Madam Clerk, for this, we can, we would have to take a roll call to? We need a motion to pull it?
It, it needs to be, it needs to be a motion on the floor of what we're trying to do, uh, to, to move ahead with this particular item. Um, and just for a point of clarification from council, when we made the acting appointments a couple of weeks ago, did you guys all receive resumes for those positions?
No.
No. Okay. Thank you.
No. Okay, Nancy Banks, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this item until the next committee of the whole meeting, at which time resumes for the individuals will be presented, um, to council.
I'm, I'm sorry, Nancy, this is Council...
Yes.
Point of clarification for the discussion. Um, Councilwoman Taylor, were you saying that you, uh, did not object to the appointment of the Assistant City Attorney Two, Marceline, because you were familiar with her? You, your objection to the deputy, was that what you were saying?
She's the deputy. I, I, and I, my feeling was she was already doing the job. She should have been in the acting group that we did a couple of weeks ago. Because she was, in my opinion, I thought that's what she was doing. Already doing the deputy city attorney's work. She was already in that acting position.
So you would be okay with the appointment of the deputy city, but you had wanted to get more information about the assistant city?
Right, I just don't think, right, that's basically it. My, my, my first suggestion was going to be that we separate the two, uh, and, and vote on them each separately. But if you wanna postpone it to, to a later day, I'm, I'm okay either way. But I don't have a problem with the deputy city attorney, because I, I just thought she was already acting in that position. And I, my question was, why wasn't she there two weeks ago? With the rest of the acting four, a month ago, or whenever we did that?
Okay, I understand that. And, and I just wanted to comment, because of the constraints that are put on, seeing that these are her two appointments and how, you know, she's been overloaded, I don't have a problem with agreeing or to the deputy city attorney. Um, but I, I would be in agreement with separating them and then possibly bringing back the assistant city. If you want more information on that.
So how would we go about doing that, Madam Clerk? Would, should we make a motion to separate these two and vote on them separately?
Well, right now, Madam, uh, Councilwoman Banks is in the middle of making a motion. So I believe we have to let her finish making her motion and see, does it get a second? And then, if so, then we can vote on hers. And if it passes or not, then we can go to another motion.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
So can we let, um, uh, Councilwoman Banks finish, uh, or present her motion first, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, I propose that the appointment of the Assistant City Attorney and the Deputy City Attorney is postponed until the next regular council meeting. And that, um, the elected officials be provided with resumes, um, of the individuals being recommended for these two positions.
Is there a second?
I support that. This is Councilman Mandelbaum, I support that.
Okay. Then moved by Ms. Banks, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we postpone the appointment of the Assistant City Attorney Two and Deputy City Attorney until the next study session, at which time council will have time, will have an opportunity to review, uh, resumes of these two individuals and, uh, have whatever discussion before we take a vote on them. Is that about right, uh, Ms. Banks, what we're saying?
That's cor, that's correct, thank you.
Okay. Um, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll and the vote, please?
Banks? Yes. Brightwell?
Yes.
Haskin?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
No.
Taylor?
Ooh. Yes.
Cruz?
No.
Okay.
All right, motion passed.
Postponed, has been passed.
Okay. All right, then, well, then that will complete our consent agenda. Uh, do, have no public hearings or strike plans. We have one ordinance that needs to be approved. Do we need a Rule 10 again before we doing it, doing enactment of ordinance as well? Madam Clerk?
Yes, we didn't cover that in the first Rule 10.
This is Councilman Mandelbaum.
Yes, Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'd, I'd like to make a motion for Rule 10 for ordinances.
This is Council, Councilwoman Taylor in support.
All right, listen, it's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we have a needed need to act to, uh, ordinance, uh, number seventeen eighteen. All those in favor of a Rule 10, say aye.
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 All opposed.
We need a roll call, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. I'm sorry.
Yes, yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Haskin?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Rule 10 adopted.
Okay.
Councilman Mandelbaum would like to make a motion that we enact ordinance number seventeen eighteen.
Councilwoman Taylor in support.
Then moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, that we enact ordinance number one seven one eight, Motor City Construction. Um, can we get another roll call, please?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Haskin?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ordinance has been enacted. All right. Moving on for two discussion items for this evening. Um, item A, AT&amp;T billing dispute. I believe this is, uh, coming from Legal. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is that the AT&amp;T billing?
Yes, Marceline.
That is the AT&amp;T bill, yes.
I think Marceline is here, hold on. We may have lost her, hold on. Hello, this is Marceline, was there an issue, uh, with the AT&amp;T?
Marceline, they were just looking for explanation.
Okay. Um, for the, uh, um, uh, the, uh, item that, uh, Renee, uh, put up there for AT&amp;T with respect to the, uh, payment for the accounts. These accounts were the IP Flex accounts. When the city transferred the city's lines to the IP Flex service back in May of twenty nineteen, uh, the, uh, charges for those lines were placed on existing IP Flex accounts that the city had when we initially started the cutover. That initial project was scrapped because there was an issue with the IP Flex talking to the, uh, E nine one one service. So we scrapped that initial project. We thought those lines were going to be disconnected, and we would get new billing once we started the IP Flex, uh, the real cutover. That didn't happen. They ended up keeping those original lines, and they were billing us for our monthly service on those lines. So what happened was in the fall of twenty nineteen, they credited, credited us for the service, um, that was initially set up, that we scrapped. They credited us all that money, which was over eighty thousand dollars or so. Um, but we still kept accruing our monthly usage charges. Um, we just discovered that they were not billing us on our original AT&amp;T account, which we had been disputing for several years. But they were billing us on these new accounts. Uh, we found that out, uh, in January of this year. So this, uh, request is to cover the payment for the city's bonus from May of twenty nineteen through Congress. Now, the city has been paying, um, monthly on our old account, the disputed account, because we still have lines on that account. So we thought we were paying our monthly service on that account. Um, unbeknownst to us, that we still had some additional lines there. So we're, we just need to square up with these accounts. And then we will be getting a credit for that disputed account for, uh, that goes back to twenty sixteen. Uh, and then we should be okay with that disputed account. And then we'll be okay with this account once this matter's taken care of.
Mr. President, this is Administrator Zorn. I, I want to point out Marceline's efforts and, um, IT, our IT, uh, efforts on this. This has been a six-year dispute, and the dispute has saved the city over two hundred thousand is the credit amount that they brought back. Back in twenty, two thousand and fourteen, uh, previous, uh, Director, uh, Laverne Walker, uh, had, had brought this to council's attention. And this has been a long-term dispute. Former city attorney Ward was involved with it. And when Marceline Pruitt joined us in the legal department, she took over that legal dispute. And it's finally coming to, uh, God willing, an, an, an end. But there's been over two hundred thousand dollars in credits that have been hard fought for by Laverne, Renee, and Marceline. And, um, this is a good, a good item. And if there's concurrence, we'll place this on the next consent agenda on the, at the March thirtieth meeting.
Okay. Um, since we're doing this via teleconference, I'm just gonna go through and call each council person's name. If you have any questions on, or comments on this item, um, you can speak when called upon. If you don't, you can just pass and, uh, just add no comment, and we can move forward. So, um, I'll start with, uh, Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. Is there a reason we just can't approve this tonight?
The, if I may, the reason was that this meeting was originally, uh, to be a, a committee of the whole. Uh, just, and, and these were just items for discussion to be acted on at the next meeting. And again, the uniqueness of the circumstances we're working on. But, uh, this would traditionally been an item that was presented at a committee of the whole and acted on at the next meeting.
Thank you.
City Clerk, QuikHawk, too, if, if it's council's pleasure, if we get through these discussion items and they're satisfied, there could be a motion to approve these, um, at the, once we get through them, if that's the appetite for the council.
Under a Rule 10?
Yes, President.
Okay. Okay, anything else, Ms. Banks?
No, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Brightwell?
Um, I don't have a problem with this. I think it seemed like the due diligence, our part's been substantial over the years. Uh, but Mrs. Zorn, uh, just from a finance committee standpoint, can you, um, I'm gonna, you know, as you know, I, I keep trying to keep track of fund balance, you know, from a ratio standpoint. Can you have Austin, uh, give me, or give the finance committee the number, what we, how we have dipped into the fund balance this fiscal year?
This, this fiscal year?
Yeah, since July. I know we've been dipping in it off and on. And I just, when I see it, dipping it to fund balance, it, it kinda throws off the ratio I have in mind, why I want to, you know, at the, at the end of the year.
We can, we can produce that, uh, number, you know, how much we've... And, and basically, there, there are budget adjustments where we're going in and, and using the fund balance, which was allocated. But I just want to be, be clear, there's no indicators that this current budget is, is overall is, is going into, uh, fund balance.
I got you, I got you.
There, uh, with the exception of, of the challenges we have in Parks and Rec.
Right, I just, I just want to see.
The last five years, fund balances have exceeded, uh, revenues have exceeded revenue, expenditures during, uh, from two thousand and fourteen to present.
I know, no, we in good shape. I'm just saying about moves and standing in pools when we talk to them. And I just, you know, I, I just want to see how we've been dipping into it. I don't think it's been hurt in anything, but, but, um... Well, finance committee's stand, just, just let me know how, let the committee know how we dipping into it. It's okay.
And if I, I may, uh, because this is a committee of the whole, I, and if we were in our normal, uh, mode, I would point out, because of what we're dealing with in this, uh, current year, we are probably gonna pull back a number of capital-type expenditures in the budget that'll be presented to council for the fiscal year beginning July one, simply because we're not, there's, there's some uncertainty of the, of the impact of the, uh, the current, uh, crisis we're dealing with, this pandemic. You know, so the one general rule... You know, so the one general rule of thumb, in speaking with our finance director this morning, would be, you know, some of our larger capital expenditures we'd pull back, but if we move on those during the fiscal year, it'll be on a case-by-case basis with an understanding that those, you know, at that time, we'd be acting on, um, we would be pulling that money out of fund balance.
Okay.
All right. Uh, Mr. Hoskins? Oh, I'm sorry, is there something else? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Hoskins.
I, I don't have any, uh, questions or comments for this item.
Okay, Mr. Mandelbaum?
I just have a clarif- I'd like a clarification. It says that the disputed amount was a hundred and thirty-two thousand and we received credits of over two hundred thousand, but we still need to pay them a hundred and twenty-six thousand. If we were disputing one thirty-two and we got two hundred in credit, why are we paying one twenty-six?
Uh, this is Marceline, if I can speak to the chair. Um, the question, um, it's, it's kind of confusing because the dispute on the one thirty-two came on the city's original AT&amp;T account. So the city has several AT&amp;T accounts, um, and that was the original dispute, dispute amount back in twenty fourteen. Uh, since that time, there have been charges that have been accruing all along. Uh, so obviously the bill has gotten larger, that bill. This bill is a completely separate bill. This is a, a different, a bill that was generated because we were switching to the new service, the IP Flex service. So the disputed account still has a bill over a hundred thousand dollars. But we are expecting a credit from October two thousand and sixteen up until May of twenty nineteen on that, on that account. Uh, because our last, um, settlement agreement that we entered into with AT&amp;T went up to October twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen. So from that date up until the date that we switched, we'll get a credit on that account too. So we're expecting that to happen and this account is completely separate.
If I may add, Mr. President, uh, multiple accounts and those balances are at different points of time, starting in twenty fourteen, uh, and what Ms. Pruitt's not telling you is multiple sales agents and, uh, lots of turnover in AT&amp;T and there were different points where the disputes were settled. But, but your net, the original amount in, uh, disputed was that two hundred thousand and, and we prevailed on that. Now the bill is, uh, from the IP Flex lines that were put into effect in twenty nineteen. So after this, we won't have any other outstanding or disputed invoices with AT&amp;T for this specific account?
We will not, we will not. We don't have, we actually don't have a dispute on this account at all. We still have a dispute open on the other account, but they owe us, uh, money from October twenty seventeen until May twenty nineteen on that account. So we should be receiving an agreement that, uh, we will agree to that they give us back, uh, whatever they charged us for that time period.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Ms. Morris?
Nothing further.
Okay, Ms. Taylor?
Um, no, no, nothing. I passed, everything is good.
All right. Okay, well, thank you very much. This will move to, uh, to our next, um, meeting for approval on what, I forgot what date that is.
March thirtieth.
March thirtieth, okay, great, thank you. All right, item B, authorization to allow requests for proposals and solicit bids for replacement for a sixty-minute self-contained breathing apparatus cylinder.
It's fire chief John Menne.
Fire chief? How you doing, chief?
Hi, good evening, uh, good evening, Mr. President and council. Can you hear me okay?
Good evening.
Okay, yes, all right. So we're seeking authorization to allow purchasing on our behalf to solicit bids to replace twenty-five sixty-minute self-containing breathing apparatus cylinders or known as bottles. Um, the self-containing breathing apparatus, SCBA's, are what we wear as respiratory protection in a compromised environment. We currently have twenty-five bottles that have met its lifespan of fifteen years. Um, and national recommendations are that replace them after fifteen years. Um, we anticipate that expenditures are gonna be thirty-five thousand dollars for these, for these bottles and we, we find the funds in, in fiscal year twenty budget of fire station repair and maintenance account. Um, we're seeking, um, authorization to have purchasing on our behalf, solicit, solicit bids and accept an RFP, um, for the, for the twenty-five bottles. I yield back to you, Mr. President.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Brightwell, do you have anything?
I'm, I'm sorry, it was on mute. I, I, I have no questions. I'm, I, I support this.
All right, Mr. Hoskins?
I don't, I don't have any questions either.
Okay, Mr. Mandelbaum?
No questions.
Ms. Morris?
No sir, no questions.
Ms. Taylor?
No questions, thank you.
And Ms. Banks?
No questions, thank you.
All right, thank you. And this also moved to our, uh, thirtieth meeting. All right, Mr. Chief, I think you got a couple to go here, uh, item C.
Yes, sir. Um, this next one, I'm seeking au- I'm seeking authorization to, to purchase replacement large diameter hose, five-inch supply hose. This is the hose that we connect from the hydrant to the fire engine to supply water for a, a, a fire. Uh, national standard recommendation is that we replace the hose after ten, ten years. We currently have hoses that have met its life cycle. We are looking to purchase forty-four lengths of five-inch hose. Each hose is, is seventy-five feet long. Um, we're looking at the expenditures to cost twenty-six thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars. This fund will be available in the FY twenty budget, fire station operation, supply account. Um, we're looking to purchase this through Emergency Vehicle Services, Inc., out of Greenfield, Michigan. It is the only sole source dealer in, in our region, so we did not, not go out for bid for this. Um, what we plan to do with the, with the retired hose is we plan to recycle it or donate it to the local fire academy. I yield back to you, Mr. President.
All right. Um, Mr. Hoskins, anything on this item?
Uh, no, no questions on this.
Okay, Mr. Mandelbaum?
The only question I have is what do we do with the old hoses? Do they just get recycled or do we use them for training?
No. What we do is we're, we plan to recycle them or we, a lot of times we donate them to the local fire academy. We keep the, actually the, uh, adapters on this in case the hose is ruptured and we can replace it and we have, we have spares there, but the hose will be recycled or donated, um, to the local fire academy.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
All right, Ms. Morris?
Nothing further, thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
No co- nothing, no questions, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Banks?
Nothing further, thank you.
All right, and Mr. Brightwell?
No question.
All right, thank you, moving on, item D.
Hey, Mr. President. We're seeking authorization to replace our port account fit testing machine. Um, this machine is used, it, I'm sorry, this machine is used in, in to fit test our self-containing breathing apparatus mass. It's an annual test that we have to do per regulation. Our old machine is approximately twenty-five years old. We have been notified that our older model, that they're no, they've discontinued it and they're no longer making parts for, for our current, um, our current unit. We look, we, we, we look at expenditures to cost sixteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. This fund will be provided by the fiscal year twenty budget and fire station's equipment and, and purchasing account. We look to purchase this equipment from company TSI Incorporated out of Shore, Shoreview, Minnesota. Um, they are the only sole source in our region that, that, that have this, so it did not go out for bid. Uh, we're, we're seeking authorization to purchase, um, this equipment for our SCBA's. I yield back to you, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Mandelbaum, any questions on item D?
No questions.
Ms. Morris?
No questions, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Taylor?
No questions, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Banks?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Brightwell?
No questions.
And Mr. Hoskins?
Uh, no questions, thank you.
All righty. Chief, back to you, item E.
Okay, item E. Um, we're seeking approval to purchase rescue task force personal protective equipment for the fire department. Many, uh, the members of the South Fire Department, along with a lot of mutual aid partners, have started training and utilizing national recognized standards to, um, rescue, to treat and remove victims from compromising areas. Um, best practices have identified that each member should have a level-three ballistic vest, a helmet, safety goggles, and a storage bag. Uh, we currently have bought ten, ten sets of this equipment in the past in, in the fiscal year of eighteen. We're looking to add additional equipment, um, to outfit members of our department. We're looking to, to purchase twenty-seven level-three ballistic vests that will allow all on-duty personnel to have proper protection, uh, threat against, um, violence against first responders. We're looking at the expenditures to cost thirty thousand one hundred and two dollars and fifty-seven cents. This will come out of the FY twenty life support operating supply budget. We're looking to purchase this from, uh, Armored Express, Inc., um, for the use of the fire department. We, we're not going out to bid on, on this, this will, I'm sorry, let me step, step back. This equipment will be purchased by Boundary Medical out of Dublin, Ohio. It's official dealer on record for the manufacturer of Arm- Armored Express. Um, we're not going out for, for bid for this. We're using a competition, uh, I'm sorry, we're using a competition bid with the state of Michigan for this for thirty thousand one hundred and two dollars and fifty-seven cents. We're looking for approval to purchase the twenty-seven ballistic vests. I yield back to you, Mr. President.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Morris, anything on item E?
No.
Okay, Ms. Taylor?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Banks?
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Bright, Mr. Brightwell?
No questions.
All right, Mr. Hoskins?
Uh, no questions, thank you.
Yes, and Mr. Mandelbaum?
One question, just regarding the, the recommendation is to purchase twenty, twenty-seven of these for the current on-call personnel. Um, do these have to be, uh, personally fitted for each firefighter paramedic or are they just general fit?
Um, recommendations are that we fit each, each person to their size, but we've, um, we've looked at our, our, our staffing and the sizes that they, we, they wear and we're buying the sizes that fit the, the majority of our, our personnel. I mean, of course, we have some individuals that are, um, they, they don't meet the normal size or, uh, on both ends of the spectrum, but we're, this will cover the majority of our, our personnel. And we have bought a couple, um, ballistic vests that, um, that are larger for our larger firefighters and the ones that are smaller for our smaller firefighters. And this is for the on-duty, not the on-call, this is for the on-duty firefighters.
But there's no, there's no danger to those firefighters if they're not specifically sized to them as long as it's a close enough fit, is that correct?
Right, it will, yes, it will cover, it, it will fit them properly, yes. Now, we're not gonna put a different size, um, vest on someone that, if it doesn't fit, no. And they will not be allowed into the warm zone without, uh, the, the proper personal protection.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, very good. I had the same question too. Okay, all right, chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, we'll go to item, item F, assignment of horticulture and landscaping duties.
Mr. President, John, Deputy Chief, uh, Deputy Administrator McReena will be addressing both items F and G.
Yep.
Good evening, council president and council. The first item may not be the easiest item to discuss via teleconference, but we'll certainly give it a try. The charter originally assigns horticulture duties throughout the entire city to Parks and Recreation. Now, in two thousand and five, it appears that council discussed moving some of that work to DPW and actually it occurred, people were transferred to DPW and equipment was reassigned, but council never actually took formal action. So this, this is intended to actually clarify and confirm, for the most part, what has already been done. And it is important because, for instance, we had a small building last year where some volunteers planted things. It, they ended up dying for lack of maintenance, but the reason was that nobody really knew it was their job to take care of it. So this is really supposed to clarify that. Now, some of the changes that will be taking place this year, I'm not asking you to approve because we are simply correcting some items. For instance, DPW had been cutting some parks and really can't use DPW funds for that. I'm not asking you to approve that necessarily, I did include it in the resolution just to provide clarity for all our employees. But the actual change that is really the heart of this matter that I'm asking you to approve is to allow DPW to approve, to maintain horticulture in the roadways and in the property that is city-owned other than Parks, the Berg, and the Fakasi Campus. Unfortunately, there was one typo, item six, it does not, it was cut off, I, I, I'm sure I did it, but it should have specified that DPW will maintain all trees because it's too expensive to maintain two tree equipment crews. But funding for DPW work in the roadways would still be DPW's, but Parks, Fakasi, and Berg would be funded through Parks and Rec and then other city property that is not roadway-related, vacant property, some of our smaller buildings, would be funded through general fund. So basically what this does is confirm the way we've really been doing things and what it looks like council intended to do in two thousand and five. And I'm willing to answer any questions, of course.
Okay. We'll start, uh, with Councilwoman Taylor.
Okay, so are we gonna be able to identify all of these separately so you can put them where they're supposed to be? I mean, if DPW is working on, say, I don't know, city grounds, do they have a way of saying where they're? Are we doing it by job or how are we doing the, maintaining the cost or controlling the cost?
Well, actually, it's, it's fairly clear if we look at the one through six, I mean, it doesn't look like you'd be able to classify all the city properties with just six items, but it, it actually does. I mean, because it's categories, it's not specifics. The only specifics I added, where I did specify the Berg and the Fakasi Campus and really those act as parks, but to clarify and prevent any confusion.
No, I meant since it's DPW workers that's doing it all, how do you account for their time? I mean, you have two going.
Oh, I understand, that's a great question. That is a great question. Actually, DPW does an excellent job of maintaining their time. They track every hour they spend, every job, every person, every piece of equipment. That's already in their assignments, that's not a problem.
Okay, so they're doing job costing and we're using this new wonderful system that we have and that should be able to give us, spit out the, uh, cost in that, per job, I guess, is what I'm trying to ask.
Yes, exactly, no, there's no prob- actually DPW is very accustomed to that because their funding comes from specific buckets that they have to prove that that work has been done properly and that is part of why this agenda- And that is part of why this agenda item's being presented, because we found work that was coming out of buckets it really shouldn't have.
Perfect, okay, thank you. It's doing what it's supposed to do then, right?
Exactly, that's exactly what we're doing.
Thank you, no other questions.
Alright, very good. Alright, Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Um, you said that the money, some of the money was gonna be taken from the General Fund. Can you clarify that, please?
Well-
Versus DPW?
Well, yes, DPW's funds are not general funds. They're either roadway, or there's a mill, a couple of millages that specifically go to them, but they can only be used for certain purposes.
Alright.
And just maintaining vacant property does not fit, say, Act fifty-one. It does not fit roadway beautification. It does not fit the, um, solid waste section. So there is really no actual funding at DPW for maintaining, say, a vacant lot. So that would actually have to be charged to the General Fund. And in a way, that may not be a disadvantage because what we have been doing in the past is hiding, not intentionally, not nefariously, but hiding the true cost of maintaining this vacant property because it's been coming from these other funding sources. Now we'll actually see what it's costing us to keep property that we're not using. And I think that's probably very good for our organization as a whole.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Brightwell?
Uh, John, um, I, I'm, I'm reading, it's, it's, it's cost neutral, but somebody is paying, right? Are we shifting dollars around?
Well, you're right, sir, and, and I, I think that's a valid question. And the point is that really what I'm asking you to approve is cost neutral. There are other changes that will occur. For instance, DPW cannot continue to cut Parks and Recreation parks and fund it itself. It has to come from DPW or from Parks and Recreation. But I'm not asking you to approve that. All I'm really asking you to approve, the real heart of the matter, is to allow DPW to cut the roadways and trim the trees, which they already do.
Okay, the dollar, the dollars will follow the job, right? The dollars gonna follow the job?
Yes, sir. And, and my point is that the dollars won't change due to what we're asking you to approve. They have to change because we've not been precise enough up to this point.
Right, who's being charged? Okay, I, I don't have a problem with it, just as long as we're just cleaning up how best to cha- charge the various entities. Okay, I'm, I'm with it, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Mr. Hoskins?
Um, I'm good.
Good, alright, Mr. Mandelbaum?
My only question is, how did we come to find this issue from two thousand and five?
We found this as we started to look at Evergreen and maintenance of the right-of-way. And, well, and also, the, um, the, the one building where there was a lack of maintenance killed some plants that had been planted. And when I looked into it, started talking to departments, everyone said, "Well, I didn't know that was anyone's job." So then, as we started researching it, that's when it came to, "Well, let's see what Council has decided. What does the charter say? Has it ever been addressed by Council?" And we found sort of this unusual situation from February two thousand and five.
And, and if I may, Mr. President, this is, uh, Administrator Zorn. The simple desire was to know who was responsible for what right-of-ways, what flower beds, where they're at, and to have a clear delineation list with maps of landscape design and, and detail, as well as then the identification of the funding source. For example, on Telegraph, you know, we've, some of you have been through issues after the road was rebuilt, irrigation system not, uh, not reinstalled, yet there's a fu, a direct funding source for that maintenance from the mixing bowl up to twelve and a half mile. And just making sure that we know whose job, who, what department and what individuals are responsible for this. Uh, last year, a number of, of retirements and people left, and there was no record of, geez, has that person transferred? That that individual was maintaining this bed or that bed. And this is really about getting down to that, uh, level of detail as well as what, what the funding source is.
Okay.
And I, I'll point out, Deputy Administrator McGrina has put in a large amount of time in, in going through this, this detail, uh, polling, voting, uh, uh, ballot questions at the county level and, uh, making sure that we have a clear handle on this and what we're doing is proper.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and, uh, Ms. Morris?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Alright, and then we have, lastly, item G, Public Address System Improvement.
Thank you, Council President. I hope this is a little more straightforward. As you recall, back on January tenth, Council approved seeking bids for improvement to our electronic access and our public address systems. The public access was clearly going to be in excess of ten thousand, so that was directed to purchasing, and it is still in the pre-bid process. The public address improvements were pretty close, whether they would be over or under ten thousand, so we started with actually pursuing the repairs. Came to actually about nine thousand dollars, and, well, definitely not over nine thousand dollars to repair the systems. We have a firm bid for some of it, and some of it is going to be as we find as they get into it, but it will not be over nine thousand dollars to repair what's there and bring the rest of these buildings up so that the P A can be heard everywhere. Because part of the problem was there were structural changes to the building, and we never changed the system. The company performing this work will be the same company that has been performing it all along, so they have the expertise to know how our system works. This council item is simply to request funding for the project. As you recall, these, these two projects actually were not funded in the budget, so we're asking nine thousand dollars to fund repairs to the public address system.
Okay. Alright, we'll start with, uh, Ms. Banks again. Any questions or concerns?
No questions, thank you.
Alright. Uh, Mr. Brightwell?
Uh, John, I, um, I know we are, we're in the process of, um, well, at some point there we'd be renovating the, uh, council chamber, you know, for security purposes.
We are, sir.
Okay, is this a, would this be baked into what, what they will be doing there, uh, or is this a hundred percent separate?
This is a separate project. Again, the council chamber and, to some extent, study improvements are in the purchasing department's hands, so they're going through the purchasing process. This is really going to be separate from that, other than that it will be in a similar location.
Okay, okay, alright, no problem. I'm okay with it. Go ahead. Okay, alright. Mr. Hoskins?
Uh, I, I kinda have the same question as, uh, Councilman Brightwell, so I'm all set.
All set, okay, great. Mr. Mandelbaum?
No questions, thank you.
Alright, thank you. And Ms. Morris?
No questions, thank you.
Yep, and Ms. Taylor?
No questions, thank you.
Alright. So the previous and current items, both also will be on our next agenda as well.
Alright, sir, thank you.
Alright, thank you. We would now move on into, uh, that completes, uh, our discussion items for this evening. We'll now move on to the communications portion of the meeting. Um, as usual, um, individuals will have a three-minute timeframe to give their communications. I don't know, Madam Clerk, did you want to give any other, any particular detail about this portion? Or we're gonna just try to go, jump right into it, see how we go?
Mr. President, uh, I was-
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just asking. I was just asking, did you have anything to add to the communications before we get started for people? Or do, um, should we be, we looking all set?
Yeah, we're, on, on the, on the cable, we're a minute behind. So you wanna give people opportunity, so, um, you can say all their names, um, and then we'll wait a minute, and then we'll see if anybody calls, and then we'll get them in the order receipt.
Okay. So just, uh, right now, who I have, um, as requesting, um, time for communication is Pamela Gerald, uh, Gerard Mullin, Stacy Jackson, and Keith Harris. So we'll, uh, give those folks a moment if they're out there to chime in. I wanna thank everybody for their patience this evening. I think we've, uh, kinda, we've gotten through this fairly well. Given the circumstances, and, uh, we will continue, um, for those listening, we will continue, uh, conducting our meeting, uh, in this manner until which time, um, the state lists any type of requirements that, uh, disallow us from meeting together, uh, in person. Uh, we'll continue to maintain this, and, and as long as we have permission from the state to continue to do so.
Councilwoman Morris, I agree. Um, I believe the meeting has ran well so far. Just wanna say, welcome back to our Council President, he's doing a great job.
Uh, thank you. Been a long road.
Yeah. See, Mr. President, we've exceeded the, uh, the time, so.
Okay. Well, that will conclude the communications portion of the meeting. Uh, we'll move on to the council portion. Um, let's see. Wanna go through everybody's names, or is, uh, I'm gonna do the same thing as before? We'll just start off with Ms. Banks. Anything you'd like to add on the council portion?
No, there's nothing that I would like to add at this time, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Mr. Brightwell?
Um, yeah, I would just say that the, uh, VA is now offering home care, basic primary care for veterans. And, um, for you to get that particular service, the veteran should contact their primary care physician at the VA. And, and, uh, you can, now the VA has rolled out home care for primary, for veterans, home, home-based primary care. So, that's it, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brightwell. Uh, Mr. Hoskins?
Uh, yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanna, of course, uh, say, uh, everyone stay safe, uh, stay home if you can. Um, the last thing we want is to, uh, continue to spread this, um, coronavirus, uh, COVID nineteen. Um, I also wanna point out that, uh, throughout the state, there's been issues with, uh, price gouging. Uh, I know this is something that, uh, we've been hearing a lot about. Um, I've been dealing with, I've been working with, uh, our state senator, Jeremy Moss, on this issue for actually, uh, quite a while, when the, uh, governor issued an executive order saying that during this time, during this state of emergency, um, no one can sell a product that is more than twenty percent higher, um, than what the person offered, um, or charged before March ninth. Uh, if you feel like you're being price gouged, please call the Attorney General's office. They have a consumer protection line. Um, they've been building a lot of calls about this. That number is one eight seven 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 six five eight three eight eight. And it's manned from eight thirty A.M., uh, to, or thirty P.M. Or you can file a complaint online, um, at the Attorney General's website. Uh, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Hoskins, good information. Uh, Mr. Mandelbaum?
Thank you. My, my question is, I guess geared towards administration. Um, we know that there's a lot of, um, things being changed or pushed off. For example, taxes, um, are being, or, you know, filing your income tax for two thousand and nineteen is being pushed back. Um, the governor also declared, um, property tax, you know, we're not gonna be foreclosing. Oakland County said the same thing, we're not gonna be foreclosing anyone's house during this time. My question is, as it relates to Southfield, what are we doing? Or have we, do we have anything in place that we've thought about doing, you know, water bills? Are we, are we gonna be putting people on, onto like a payment plan if they can't pay? Are we letting things go during this period?
If, if I may, um, Mr. President, I would, uh, direct, uh, council and the general public to our city webpage. We actually have a, a, an entire COVID apart, uh, uh, portion. Um, we haven't addressed water bills, but that would be an item that would require council action pursuant to our ordinance. Uh, I will, uh, remind council that, um, obviously, in, in the fiscal challenges, we're, we're not sure of the full impact of unemployment. Under my portion, I'll go over a number of the items that we, we have done. But we do have the hardship, uh, policy in place for water, and we'll start P R-ing that, uh, at, at a greater level. And we'll, uh, you know, we can bring some type of, of council action regarding water bills. If, if, I, I, it sounds like I'm hearing a desire for that. Um, tax collection has ended. We have waived, uh, just the processing of bills. Uh, we are not processing late penalties. I believe we're doing a, a week delay on that, and I'm looking for that from the, in the web right now. Yeah, um, I, I, I agree, I agree with Mr. Mandelbaum. If I could, I just wanted to just reiterate, yeah, I would like this, uh, to be able to have a discussion about the water bills on possibly next week's, next week's meeting. Go ahead, Mr. Mandelbaum.
Um, the, you know, and I, I am, I'm looking at the city's website right now, and it's, there's a lot of information out there, and I'm looking specifically where on the coronavirus update page. It doesn't, it just says, you know, this, how to contact the city clerk for operations, um, the city's treasurer's operations, it just, you know, just says, "We're not taking cash, and you can use a Dropbox or pay online." It doesn't give anything else specifically unless I'm looking in the, in the wrong place.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm in there as well, and I, I think we've, uh, need to speak to the water department in, in general. Um, I can tell you, um, in our, we're, we're still in the middle of our REED installation, and we're not doing any emergency work. I don't think we spoke to billing just yet in, in this, uh, pandemic.
Right, but what I'm saying is not, not just water, but, you know, if we're, if we're following others, the county or the state's lead with tax bills and things like that, I think we need to call it out a little bit better on the city's website.
Okay. I, I will remind you that we have completed the tax collection season, uh, and the treasurer's office is completing the closeout of that. Uh, but we, uh, the next, uh, tax collection period won't be till this summer.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mandelbaum. Uh, Ms. Morris?
Yes, no, I agree with, um, Councilman, um, Hoskins. I just wanted to say to everyone, you know, um, you know, be safe, be well, um, you know, adhere to, you know, the social distancing guidelines, and let's just pray for, you know, those that have been affected, uh, by this virus. Um, pray for our nation, pray for our city, and, um, you know, let's just get through it, through it together. Pray for peace, a lot of anxiety right now, so. Those are my comments, thank you.
Yes, indeed. Alright, thank you, Ms. Morris. And Ms. Taylor?
Uh, thank you. First, welcome back, uh, Council President. It's nice to hear your voice and to, to hear from you. I want to say thank you- voice and to, to hear from you. I want to say thank you and remind everybody that's on the call how hard our city administrator and our leaders of this city have been working over these, uh, last few days. Cause they've been on call and making calls and making decisions 24/7. It's been non-stop and your work is outstanding. The communication has been great. Uh, you've eased a lot of nerves as Councilwoman Morris mentioned. A lot of people are panicking and that. And the information that you and the mayor have been putting out has been great. I really appreciate that. And I just wanted to take this time to say thank you to that. And just so that you know, the city has the emergency response team. And to me, that deserves recognition. And I want to say thank you for you doing that and for keeping us up to date. We do want to pray for the families that are affected and we do want all of us to practice safe, uh, behaviors so that we do not in any way add to the possibilities of us receiving this, um, virus. Uh, and just be safe and be patient and kind and understanding towards others. Uh, that's going to really pay off in the long run. So I, I just wanted to acknowledge how hard working our, um, city leaders have been. I mean, and the information that you've been getting out and the, um, the way that we've worked together with the county and with the hospitals and the schools, everything is just working so well together. Our critical analysis team is just amazing. So, uh, a lot of things you may or may not know, but the city of Southfield is second to none when it comes to emergency response. So I just want to say thank you to our firefighters, all of our first responders, everybody that's putting their life on the line for us each and every day. Uh, it means so much and we just want to say thank you. And that's my comment for tonight.
Great. Thank you. All right. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, good evening. Good evening.
Hopefully leave you out of everything today.
Um, I'm listening intently. Um, I, um, would echo, um, Ms. Taylor, uh, city administrator Zorn's leadership, uh, in pulling together a team of, of, uh, with, uh, daily communication and updates, um, including, uh, with Providence Hospital, uh, has been excellent. Uh, in, in particular, I would, um, also like to cite the work of Justin Beck, our emergency manager, um, a preparedness, uh, manager for, um, I don't know if the man is, uh, getting any sleep at all. He's, uh, totally been on point, um, uh, and our various departments, including HR with, uh, James Meadows, uh, Chief Menefee of the fire department and, um, uh, uh, our police chief, um, Barron, uh, have really been, uh, on task and, um, uh, keeping us, um, well-informed and safe during this, um, very unusual circumstance. The other thing I wanted to mention this evening is, uh, everyone by now should have received the census form. Um, and we're encouraging people, uh, especially if you're, you're, uh, sheltered in place, it's a good time to either go online, uh, or telephone or, uh, uh, fill out the form and get it in, in the mail. Uh, the census, as we've, um, said at every meeting, is extremely important to us. Uh, and in Southfield, we need everybody counted. Thank you.
Yep. Uh, you're, you're absolutely right, Mr. Mayor. I filled, filled my census form out on my cellphone the other day while I had a few minutes in between something I was doing. And I, it didn't take long at all. Uh, and, uh, like you said, it's extremely important for the state as well, which of course affects us here in the city. So, uh, take the time and get it done. We, uh, we got a lot to lose and a lot to, or lots to gain. Uh, Mr. Zorn?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. You know, I, I too want to welcome you, uh, back, although I've been in communication with you while you were out and appreciate your leadership and, uh, working with Ms. Morris as well. The, um, unfortunately, dealing with this COVID-19 virus, uh, to remind council, we first discussed this at a council meeting in, uh, I, I believe it was, uh, our first meeting on camera, uh, in, in January. And then we were just, you know, the basic hygiene, uh, message. And I could tell you myself and Deputy Administrator McRina, uh, Fire Chief and, uh, uh, McMenefee, uh, Justin Beck, our emergency operations manager and, uh, Chief, uh, Barron, you know, we had started at that point, a weekly meeting, cleaning supplies and ordering things. We knew, you know, it was clearly the case of, you know, prepare for the worst and, and expect and pray for the, uh, the best. And unfortunately, we're seeing this scourge hit us. And I want to just give our listening public, um, a little bit of, of a, how we're handling this. Daily, uh, and my entire management team, uh, is on a conference call. Uh, we start with just a, a briefing of, of the stats where we're at. Uh, police and fire give us, uh, a, a synopsis of where they're at. And, you know, that can include, uh, police officers who've been out, uh, due to possible exposure, uh, or self-quarantine. Our fire department, uh, in particular, uh, they have been, they've been hit. Uh, we have ten, ten firefighters, uh, in, uh, a self-quarantine mode. Uh, you know, they're practicing all of the best, uh, the, uh, practicing all of the best rules, uh, in handling, uh, patients. But early on, we didn't always know that a patient or a family member may, may have later on tested, uh, positive. Uh, so we're, we continue to do it, deal with that. Uh, three of those firefighters are out due to international travel. I'm going to leave you with some good news. Uh, I authorized, uh, myself and Mr. Meadows have requested that, uh, Clerk Hawkins swear in new fire, three new firefighters who are all three EMTs. Uh, that's a time when we can really use those bodies. And one new police officer will be foregoing our usual ceremony, uh, due to the pandemic, but just to get them on board as quickly as possible. Our general employees have been impacted as well. Um, I'm going to encourage the general public to review the city's website daily. Um, and I'm just going to hit on a, a, a couple of things that we, uh, touch on, you know. Number one, recent executive orders from the state and the county. For example, over the weekend, the county put out an executive order that, uh, all playgrounds were to be closed. Uh, that came out at 11:00 AM on Saturday. Uh, by end of the day on Saturday and early Sunday, we had all the park playgrounds marked that they are closed. And I want, the listening pu, uh, public should recognize that you can still walk and recreate. We've got some great trails. We're PR-ing, uh, those trails. Uh, Justin also reviews with us, the, a summary of the Oakland County Emergency Management Team's meetings. He's on multiple phone conferences a day. Uh, last week, we had a briefing, uh, from representatives from, uh, Providence Ascencia, uh, Joe Hershey, Dr. McGraw, Margaret, uh, Colar, who's the CEO at Providence Hospital, and Melissa Thatcher. And they were walking us through the setup of their incident command. Uh, Providence Hospital is doing drive-through testing on site. Uh, and I'm reporting daily numbers to council as we, uh, get those. Coordination of housing for employees who may need to be quarantined. We're working with the American Red Cross for Possible Quarantine Center here in, in Southfield. We're waiting for those triggers to be pulled. Then we're moving on to what happens, uh, in the aftermath. What, what can we do to our local, uh, businesses, uh, our small minority and women-owned businesses to make sure they get through this? Uh, Community Relations is, uh, developing a new webpage to make sure that, uh, we have support readily available and coordination between county, state, federal resources. Uh, code enforcement is relaxing certain ordinances. Parking enfor, enforcement, uh, we're looking simply there to decrease points of public contact. Uh, sign ordinances for restaurants. Uh, we know that a lot of our restaurants are moving to a carryout. We want to support them, uh, you know, recognizing that they have probably lost, you know, 85% of their business. Uh, and then we're not enforcing restrictions relative to parking of recreational vehicles. Some families who are fortunate enough to have those vehicles may be using that, uh, recreation vehicle as part of their, uh, their quarantine, their, uh, stay-in-place, uh, strategy. Uh, I have to give my, uh, a shout-out and compliments to both, uh, our, our community relations group as well as Cable 15. Cable 15 has produced a number of public service announcements very quickly. At the same time, making sure we're keeping all of our employees safe during this process. And then, of course, we're weighing the impact of this on our tax base and our budget. I have said to our staff, we, we really need to do everything we can to minimize the impact, uh, there. Um, I'll continue to send out these short, uh, very cut-and-paced messages as I get them. Earlier this evening, I, uh, sent out a message, uh, regarding curbside garbage pickup with the governor's new executive order. It will continue. There, uh, simply recycling, uh, that service will stop. That's the green bag you can put out on your curb for, uh, garbage. Community Relations and Cable will help, help us get that message out as well. Uh, a number of new policies have been adopted in the, uh, past few weeks. Um, and those policies include our infectious disease outbreak and extenuating circumstances policy, emergency, uh, closing policy. Mayor Seiber did, uh, declare a state of emergency pursuant to our infectious, uh, control policy. I did declare a workforce, uh, uh, hea, uh, uh, health and safety work, workplace cautionary period. This puts in place a bank of time for our full and, uh, our full and not, our full-time employees and our non-career employees to have a bank of time to deal with, uh, it's, uh, self-quarantine, family situations, taking care of family, uh, or children pursuant to the, uh, Family Medical Act, or hopefully not use the time to recover in the event that they are, uh, receive a positive diagnosis. Uh, a lot of things are moving and happening very quickly. Um, so I really appreciate the council's support. We're taking, uh, city council is under lockdown, uh, pursuant to the executive order 2021. If, that takes effect tonight at midnight, uh, we're doing, uh, we have declared a core group of employees as essential, uh, or the, uh, the governor's term is critical infrastructure workers. We're creating ID badges, uh, for those employees. Badges will be created and may have already been created for the elected officials and we will get those, uh, to you. Um, we'll continue to keep you, uh, informed. Uh, we are keeping core hours at city hall in all departments. Those core hours are Monday through Thursday, uh, from 10:00 AM till 3:00 AM. We will have, you know, every department, uh, staffed or manned, perhaps onsite or from remote, uh, remote locations. We've opened up the number of employees and much thanks to our IT group for all of the employees who can now access, uh, their desktop computers remotely. Uh, calls from, uh, employees' desks can now be forwarded to cell phones or home phones. We're really encouraging the bulk of our employees to, to work for, uh, work for, work from home. I cannot, uh, sing enough praise for our, uh, fire department and EMT and police dispatch, uh, as they deal with this crisis. And, and again, to Justin Beck, who's been the quarterback on the emergency operations, uh, plan. Uh, if there are any questions, I'll do my best to field them, Mr. President.
Okay. Anybody have anything for Mr. Zorn? Again, I think we've, we've, uh, noted almost well.
And, and Mr. President, if I, I may, just if, uh, just two other, um, I clearly heard Ms. Taylor's concerns about the PDQs and I will be, uh, most likely teleconferencing with, uh, Mr. Meadows as well as, uh, Gigi Robinson to, uh, move that along and, uh, get the most recent status of the, uh, compensation, uh, study. And then I just want to comment on Northland. I believe I have spoken to all, all of you, but the Northland Renaissance deal and the, uh, Northland Greenfield deal, those deals have both been withdrawn by the, uh, purchasing parties. Uh, we did, um, move forward on the Ascencia Health piece, but I want to communicate we have much, very strong interest on the Greenfield piece and a, 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 a nice offer floating out there on the, uh, the Renaissance, the former Renaissance piece. Um, and again, uh, thank you, uh, to city council.
All right.
Thank you, Fred. This is Councilwoman Taylor. Thank you for everything.
Yep. You're welcome. Okay. Well, yep, we appreciate your work and the team's work. There's nothing else there? We'll move on to the attorney's portion?
Mr. President, this is Councilman Mandelbaum.
Oh, yes.
I, I just, on, on the comment that was last made by our city administrator, does that mean, or I don't know if the council has an appetite for this, but in revoking the use of medical marijuana at Northland, being that we specifically did it for that group? Or do we want to leave it there in hopes that someone else comes along with the same vision?
Mr. President, may I suggest that the task force tackle that? I could tell you what's being discussed right now. There is no discussion about marijuana. Um, in fact, one entity that inquired regarding Greenfield, um, through our broker, we were quite clear that we weren't in, interested in a provisioning center there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Again, moving on to the attorney's portion. Anything from the attorney's office?
Um, no, not at this time. Just reviewing each order that the governor comes out with and making sure, uh, that I stay on top of how it specifically applies to municipalities. Uh, cause sometimes the orders comes out and we think, oh, it's for everyone. But as we learned last week, it only applied to the, um, state agencies. But we're thankful that she was specific. So that's, uh, the attorney's office pass.
All right. Thank you. Um, as we move on to the clerk's office, we also want to give, give a shout-out to our, our clerk as well, who is, um, telling behind the scenes is the glue behind a whole lot of this stuff happening. I want to thank her for all her hard work as well, uh, for this evening and, and for a lot that's going on during this time of crisis. Uh, did you have anything to add, uh, Madam Slurk?
No, I just wanted to thank everybody for, I probably talked to everybody this week on multiple occasions for being flexible as we're moving forward, uh, to the teleconference. Uh, only thing I would ask is if the council, um, had an appetite for, uh, because everyone is home, changing the time of our teleconference meetings, um, over the next two council meetings. Um, due to our personnel issues, if we did have the meetings earlier, we would have the opportunity to save on a little bit of, um, overtime with some of the people that are, uh, helping with get these meetings going behind the scenes. So if council had an appetite for that, um, we can move in that direction. If not, uh, we would just continue to move forth as is with our, uh, teleconference meeting.
Counsel, any appetite for possibly maybe moving our, uh, meetings earlier in the day? Possibly during work during the, what would have been normal work hours or something, maybe three o'clock or something of that nature? Where we could, uh, start earlier, end earlier, eliminate any, maybe possible overtime and such?
This is Councilwoman Taylor. That would not work for me because I'm still working, even though I'm working remotely most days due to the, uh, you know, the governor's order. So I would not be... So I would not be...
Okay. Well, that's enough for me.
No worries.
Okay, well, we just thought, I mean, that's a, that's a great idea, uh, you know. I mean, if we were going to do something like that, we would have had to probably make a move on that tonight, so. Um, if it's going to create a, uh, a, an issue of concern for any, any, any of us that, that where we couldn't be here as we'd normally planned to, then, um, we'll just continue, um, as we normally have it set up, yeah.
Sorry.
No, no worries, uh, Councilwoman Taylor. We just thought we were just approaching topics. No worries, we're good.
Yep.
Anything else, Madam Clerk?
Uh, no, we're good. Thank you.
Good, all right. Okay, anything from the treasurer's office?
Everything's good on our end.
Okay. Uh, planning? Okay, assessor or engineer? Okay. Mr. President? If I can just comment, just, uh, uh, engineer, you know, we have a number of construction projects that are underworked. You know, some of them are critical infrastructure projects. The contractors and, as well as their collective bargaining, uh, uh, groups want to continue working. They are practicing social distancing. We've checked with the state, uh, so you will see our construction projects, uh, continue to work. Uh, now, the city and our Public Works Group, we've divided them into three crews, and we're trying to really enforce social distance. The city is only doing emergency work, but our capital projects, those will continue unless the, uh, the contractor and/or their employees, uh, want to stop. But we're told they, they are taking precautions on, on these construction sites. And then I just want to really stress that people do their best to stay at home. The last week, we've heard some just incredible stories about neighbors checking on each other, fly, firing their doors and, and letting, you know, letting people know, neighborhood associations asking, if you need anything, give us a call. Just people, well, we can't connect face-to-face, but picking up the phone, you know, do you need anything? Uh, we're going, we're doing a Kroger run, uh, or, you know, we're going to have a delivery. Just people really working together, and we're going to try to highlight some of those, uh, things. Uh, and I'll tell you, it's also a very stressful time for us being cooped up in our homes and that. Uh, you know, husbands, you know, married couples should buy squirt guns. When you get mad, just squirt each other, you know. Uh, there's, we don't have our typical outlets. It's, normally, we'd all be watching basketball or watching a hockey game or two. We're being denied that too, so let's, uh, try to, as, as Councilwoman Morris said, find that peace and, uh, but, you know, let's stay in our homes and shelter in place. Okay, thank you.
Great advice. Thank you. Um, we have any, at this point, don't have anything to schedule. Um, is there anything else for the good of the order?
All right, hearing none, uh, I guess our meeting is adjourned.